Tina. Just a reminder that the meeting is live streamed. You don't want to wait. I don't know if there's anybody watching. Probably something on telly. Right. The presentation from Breckland will now take place in the public participation section. It's going to have to be a bit condensed, I'm afraid, though. Fifteen minutes makes... Yeah, okay, lovely. Item one, to receive and accept apologies for absence. Tina Cruz and Catherine Stalard. You're all happy to accept for Tina Cruz? And for Catherine? Okay. Item two, to note declaration of members' personal prejudicial and disclosable pecuniary interests in respect of items on the agenda. I'm on 7.1. There's an interest. Has anyone else got any interests at all? Thank you. Item three, 3.1, the minutes, to confirm that the minutes of the meeting held on the 10th of January 2023 are a true and accurate record. Has everybody had opportunity to read them? Or those that are happy to accept them? Okay. 3.2, to receive an update on items from the previous meeting, if not agenda items, for this meeting. Is there any updates at all to be sent, Michelle?
No, just what was in your packs.
Yes, Peter.
Chester, can I ask, have we heard from the officer from planning at Norfolk County Council yet? Church Walk? Well, it's rather disappointing because we had a very good meeting for those who were there. And he promised to get back to us, and that was November, and we've heard nothing. So I would like to propose that the mayor sends a letter to him or an email to him saying that we had a very good meeting with him in November and we thought things are moving forward, but we're extremely disappointed to have heard nothing since then. And unless we hear something in the next week or so, then we'll be forced to take further action over it because I think we need to make a formal complaint. So I'll make that as a proposition.
All those in favour?
Yes, Dan.
I just want him to reply. But we have sent you copies before, weren't we, before we went to see him? That we have, because we haven't heard from him.
Okay.
Could I suggest then that we send Claire a copy of the email we sent to him a couple of weeks ago? And then you know what we're going on about.
Complete child. Okay. Item four, to receive reports, 4.1, chairman's report. On the 12th of January, Stan and I attended the ceremony for the new vicar at St Mary's. His name's Dave Cossey. On the 18th of January, it was Watten priority meeting in the council chambers. And I'm pleased to report that there are no planned items focused within Watten. As everybody thinks, tickety-boo at the moment, touching some wood. And it was therefore agreed that Shipton had a greater need for regular police patrols because that's part of Austin's area. The 19th of January was a teams meeting of five market towns, which Michelle and myself attended. We were advised that the bid for the levelling up money for Breckland had not been successful, as you all have read about on subsequent emails. There is funding available for the coronation for charities of £500 and £200 for councils that will have to be match funded and used for flags and flagpoles. So from our point of view, we've already got flagpoles down the High Street. Breckland will be changing the flags accordingly, so I don't see that we would benefit by match funding £200 when our own mobile flagpole costs more than £400 to start with. So if everyone's happy, we probably won't worry about going for the £200. Yes, Tina?
Make a suggestion, and if it be a do at the sports centre, for instance, with the cinema, if that was to come off, then that apply for the £200 to go towards that and match it with the sports centre to make a big event down at the sports centre?
Well, I got the impression it was just for flags and flagpoles.
I would ask the question just to see whether or not that could be varied, as we have already got the flags. That money's, you know, got to be used for events and such like, and for commemoration. So it might be worth the ask.
Query that, Michelle. Michelle's passed the details to Sue Dent to hopefully work with the sports centre on the £500 because of the community event there. There will also be large screens available. So again, hopefully Sue will work with Breckland and yourself, Toby, on that. Any details regarding the weekend will be coming direct from the palace and not Bruno Peaks as previously thought, and he did the Queen's Jubilee. This time he's not involved. Also discuss whether development sites available around the market towns, and that's available to view on the Breckland website. And there's also been a change in the time that a neighbourhood plan will be valid, which has gone from two years to five years. Whereas ours is still in the process of being accepted, we're fine for the five years. But it was, I think, Attleborough and Swaffham possibly, they've actually come out of their two years. So it was, they were querying whether they need to do another one or whether it would be extended on that. And that wasn't answered at the meeting. But that's all on my report. 4.2, first chairman's report.
Chair, yeah, I attended the SNAP meeting on the 18th of January, and I have been at a number of meet, well, same meetings, for the food hub. I was there to ensure where you were able to unpack all the food that had arrived. We managed to get. And it opened on a soft opening this afternoon with the ladies group. And 30 people signed up to be members of the food hub. And it'll be open again on Thursday morning for the mothers and toddlers club. And we'll sign up people again then. And once we've had a couple of meetings of that, then we'll start to launch it properly for the rest of the town. But at the moment, we are offering the opening to people in Carbrook as well because the food bus isn't running at the moment. We don't want to see them being disadvantaged.
Thank you. 4.3, district councillors' report. Claire, it only came through at half past six this evening, and most of us were already here. So if you've got, I was going to say, if you've got a copy. Yeah. If you could read that out for us, that would be lovely. Yeah. Has somebody got a spare mic? Thank you, Toby. I'm sorry, yeah, I've gone district, love, I'm telling you, I'm sorry. Sorry, Tina, I jumped it round and I...
Is it on?
Yeah.
Oh, right, okay. Good evening, councillors. So this is just a report from Breckland and a little bit from county. Breckland councillor preparing a design guide for Breckland in order to inform future design and development within the district. And this work follows on from the Breckland Landscape and Settlement Character Assessment, which was completed last year. It's part of the process described in the National Model Design Code. The design guide will be, become supplementary planning document, Breckland District Design Guide, as well as inform the update of the local plan. And input from Breckland communities is essential to the success of this piece of work. And to that end, a number of engagement opportunities are available. There's a survey monkey, survey that they've done on the Breckland website. And the council is also running some design guide workshops, details of which are also on the website. And you can register your interest in attending those in response to the survey. So there's online workshops on the 9th of February and an in-person workshop at Elizabeth House on the 24th. It is an important piece of work which will give communities more control over the future design and development in the Breckland area. And this is your chance and the community's chance to help shape the policy. As has already been alluded to, disappointingly, the levelling up fund of Breckland area was not supported in round two. We know that demand for the fund was extremely high, but this is still very frustrating news. And not least because we were able to submit a very strong bid, technical bid, which was a result of considerable work. Had we been successful, one of the main projects, as you know, was the construction of Digital and Creative Media Centre in the High Street, which would have provided office space for SMEs and entrepreneurs, training space, as well as significant retail and cultural provision. As has hopefully been demonstrated through making the bid at Watten and in particular investment on the High Street are a key priority for Breckland Council. And should be borne in mind that the levelling up fund is by no means the only route to funding. And the council will continue to work with all partners to deliver this via other routes. And I'd like to thank all of those who worked hard on the bid, and also particular thanks to Dr David Dent for his vision, determination and positivity. And just from the county council, some good news. Inspectors have praised children's services at Norfolk County Council, judging the authority is good and highlighting its exemplary and exceptional areas of practice. The inspection looked at the support the council offers children and families from before birth through to adult life. And the judgment relates to all services from early health and prevention to more specialist support for families with the greatest need. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Tina. Would you like to do your district councillor report?
I think with the current situation with my mum, it's, her, my life is a bit up there at the minute, but I have written a few notes on a bit of an envelope, a fag packet, but there you go. I have, I was also at the vicar's inauguration at the church with the chairman and Stan, which was very good. I also wanted to update that we've managed to get the funds for the skate park for the sports centre, which is absolutely brilliant news for the sports centre, I think, and some other money through the 106 for the sports centre and for the lock. So hopefully that'll move things forward there. Then I'm also this coming week going to a few meetings regarding the town delivery plan and the update on MTI money, things like that, which I will update as I find out more. Want to reiterate to all councillors here that if they've got anything that they want to know or chase up or anything, please, that's what we're here for, ping me an email and then I can send it off, like I just did now, to Greg Pearce and read the charging points, you know, and then I can filter back as we go along, rather than giving it once a fortnight. That makes life a little bit easier. Also want to point out that there has been plans coming for the change of use for the Verve. That's only just literally landed on the desk, the ink is still wet. I have chased it today because work has already started on it. I'm a bit concerned, and I hope council will back me on this in putting the comments when it does come in, that on the plans, it doesn't look like there's going to be a bar. So I have asked if it can be included if, if, I mean, I'd like to see it go back to a hotel, don't get me wrong, and I fully support that, so long as it is a hotel and not a hostel for migrant workers, et cetera, which is my fear. So I would like to put caveat on that planning if it does get to that stage. And I've asked the planning to, to look at that because, as I say, there's no bar on the plans, which is a bit worrying. So that's, I've got my finger on it. Thank you. Okay, so that's, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Tina. Keith, was there anything from you?
No, from my point of view, it's all been very quiet, sort of December, January so far. So things will hopefully, well, soon we're going to be coming into purr, the elections coming up. So things will die down a bit then, but we'll see what happens.
Okay. 4.5, then the deputy clerk's report.
No, other than what's in the pack, I was going to update verbally on a few things, but they've been covered in other reports, so no, nothing from me.
Okay. Item five, to note and amend the works in progress list. Got that one, is there anything that anybody?
Yeah.
Yep.
Hang on, I've just circled it. Number 50. Number 50. Hang on. Yeah, the, to apply for a second teen shelter, I don't remember us actually agreeing to that because I remember when we were talking about Lovel Gardens Play Park, that we were going to be looking at doing a whole, because there was still money left over in the 106 to refurb the whole thing, rather than just putting extra bits in. Because everything on that Lovel Gardens Play Park was and is coming to the end of its use. So I can't ever remember it being just a teen shelter, but we did discuss it and Jane was going to look at getting quotes for a complete refurb on the whole Lovel Gardens Park.
Yeah, because then there's stuff that is there and still useful is going to be moved to private road, isn't it?
Absolutely, yeah, that's it. So, and there is money, and if we don't use it, we're going to lose it. And the money that is available still on the 106 agreements is coming to an end. We were going to ask to, like we've done with the skate park, collate 106 monies to try and bring something off. And because we're such a linear town, that can be used. It doesn't have to be specifically for that end or that end. It can be used, at least the questions can be asked whether it can be. So it's, it's worth getting the quotes to completely refurb it and have a launch, as it is such a prominent site. And it's going to be near the New Little Development as well. So every little helps down that end. Yeah. She did, she did instruct some quotes, I remember her doing so. Yeah.
Thank you, Tina. Was there any other queries on any of them at all? Got anything on, Michelle, that you want to comment on? Is everyone happy with that works of progress? Yes, Dan?
On, on number 72, the town council supporting other organisations, does the smiley face mean, because we've actually been given the money, haven't we, for the, for the community sector for it to be down there? So does that need to be on the, on the list anymore?
Come off if it's all...
I think as we were on the current position, we're still waiting for another meeting with Gabrielle.
All right.
With other partners in the town.
Right.
So that's why I've left it yellow.
Right, okay. All right. Because Sue told me that we, the money had been awarded for down there and the other, certainly the other ones in town had been awarded as well.
Okay, leave that one for me then, and I'll have a look at that yellow, that's fine. Thank you, Dan. Item six is public participation, as there's no members of the public. Over to Breckland, please, for a quick presentation.
Hello, everyone, and I'm sorry about the miscommunication this evening. Yeah, just to introduce myself, I'm... Oh, have I done this wrong?
No, it is right, sorry.
Okay. Can you hear me now? So I'm Caroline Pidwell, I'm place working and partnerships manager at Breckland Council. I've been in the role for seven months now, it's a new position. And really, I'm tasked along with my team, which includes Emma, to look at the delivery of the Future Breckland Programme, which I'm sure you should be aware of by now. Emma's come to present to you before. But really, just as a, a really short summary, it's really our vision for each of the towns. So it's a visionary document with the priorities that we see need to happen in the town to ensure the town's growth over the next 10 years, as I say. Emma and the team managed the consultation work, obviously before my time, and worked really hard to make sure that the documents that we have in place now are really valuable and really set out the kind of goals that we want to see that reflect what the residents, communities and all stakeholders want. So I'll let Emma give a bit of a recap to what the consultation work included, and then I'll kind of go into governance after she's given an outline of that.
So shout if you can't hear me, but it's not usually criticism that I'm not heard. I think it's been about a year and a half now since we came to Watten for town delivery plans work under Future Breckland. So really quick recap of where we were with that one, because it's been a while since we've come to speak to you. The rationale behind this work were that there were a few challenges that needed addressing. One of them, despite the frustrating news of Levelling Up Fund recently, was that historically we've been unsuccessful with securing funding. And for one of those, one of those reasons is we were just never prepared and you're given four weeks to turn things around. So we needed shovel-ready project, projects, along with the evidence to apply for those. Another challenge that we had is that we weren't very good as Breckland Council at working with our partners, and that includes town councils like yourself, as well as at county level, but also business stakeholders, communities, et cetera. So we set out to do this piece of work to really understand that and put in some real priorities and a vision for the future. My memory's not that good, so I'm going to have to read off my phone here. So we got to a place where we had the town delivery plan drafted from all of that consultation. That was then published for six weeks for public feedback. We've now incorporated all of that feedback from having those conversations with residents groups such as Lochneaton Trust, we went and spoke to them. There've been some adjustments there. So in summary, we've now got a selection of game-changing interventions. They're designed to be ambitious, so up to 10 years plus to deliver, and each will cost up to a million plus. So they are designed to be ambitious, but they are complemented by some smaller, short-term tactical interventions as well. In summary, for the big game changers, we've got improving local provision. That's looking at the community provision currently, which is fantastic in the town, but there was a local steer to enhance that further. So that is working with groups like Charlotte Harvey Centre, Queens Hall, Wayland House, Sports Club, et cetera. There's another one looking at enhancing the town centre, so that's looking at Chasten Place, Middle Street. And also, we heard really strongly requirements for improvements to accessibility and the streetscape, because there's not enough crossing points, for example, along the High Street for some elderly residents or those with pushchairs. There is one on looking at the gateway into the town centre. I think many of you in this room actually, it's, it's obvious when you walk into the town, there are improvements that are needed to certain shop fronts and public realm as you enter the town centre to make it more enticing for people coming in. There is rejuvenating Lochneaton, and that work actually is started now through the MTI fund, which is really exciting. And that's looking at making that space more accessible. I'm pleased to hear that that's not looking to put in a swimming, open water swimming centre there anymore, kind of slightly more sensible with that one. And essentially, it's just making that more fit for purpose for everyone in the community. That includes working with the sports centre, the car park there as well. The Digital Creative Media Centre is in there and also looking at reconnecting Watten and Swaffham along the disused railway line to put a kind of leisure and walking and cycling facility across there. Those are the big game changers. And the short-term wins are looking at things like shop front improvements, looking at planting new trees, doing pop-up events and just more themed events and festivals around the town so that people can see activity. We're quite keen that this isn't a document that sits on the shelf, along with many, many others that I'm sure have been drafted for Watten and many other towns in the district. So it's a very quick skip through the document. There is a question of governance, how we're going to make that happen. So I'll kind of hand back over to Caroline.
Great, thanks. So we have outlined in the paper that we sent you that the overarching board is the Future Breckland Board, and that's a mix of, like a joined up cross-sector approach. So we've got Norfolk County Council on there, obviously Breckland Council, as well as the LEP. We have private sector representation from businesses. We've also got the Norfolk Community Foundation who are also on there. And that kind of mixed group of people are really there to kind of push forward some of the ambitions which are Breckland-wide. And these are set out in the Breckland Prospectus, which is the document, which is kind of the umbrella document for the, for the area. In terms of the town delivery plans, obviously there's some really specific projects in there, and we really want the work to be led project by project. So we'll be looking at those specifically. Some of them, which Emma has already outlined, we're already kind of working with partners to deliver. And our view is just to bring in the right people needed to get those projects across the line. Importantly, we understand that the consultation work took place quite recently. However, over a number of years, they're probably, we really want them to maintain their relevance. So we would like to hold annual town forums in each of our towns. We'd like to hold one in Watten where we can look through those, the, excuse me, the town delivery plans and make sure that the details in there are correct and that we're responding to the needs of the towns at, you know, as time progresses. So I, I think really, as Emma and I tried to outline, that the benefits of us all signing up to this is kind of the better partnership working for us to, when money comes available, when funds are there for us to apply for, we know what we should be doing for the, for the benefit of the towns. We've already been to Deirame and Swaffham. This is our third town where we're asking you to adopt the plans. And as I say, we spoke to Jane and Michelle previously, and we want to get a closer partnership working with yourselves so that we can kind of really see some of these pieces of work progress. Obviously, very disappointed with the Levelling Up Fund results, but there is likely to be a round three. And at least the work like this and work we're aiming to do in the future gives us the material so we can hit the ground running when those opportunities come, you know, come around. So, yeah, we just wanted to give you the opportunity to ask any questions and hope that you'd be happy to support us in kind of delivering on these plans going forward.
Thank you, Caroline. Has anybody got any questions at all? Yes, Jane.
Just a quick one, is that now a public document?
Yes, it is, yeah.
You haven't got, because we haven't got one for the lock and we need it for our meeting. So if Michelle brings us a copy, you haven't got a problem.
Oh, no, it's all on the website. It was all adopted by Breckland Council towards the end of last year. And, yeah, those documents are open to everyone, the final versions.
I think I can say what to fill, if that helps. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, Beryl?
Hello. Is there still funding for shop fronts?
It's certainly, that is one of the projects that we want to do district, district-wide. It's not open at the moment, but it's certainly one of the things which is across all the towns that we certainly want to invest some funds in.
Okay, thank you. Has anyone got any other questions at all?
Just a bit, sorry, just a bit crystal clear, that's the vote through.
No, we've got it. Not got to that, no. That's item eight, and we've just done six for the public. So is everybody happy? No more questions on that? Thank you. So we go, go on to item seven, the finance. 7.1, to approve payments for jan- one to approve payments for January twenty twenty three. Hopefully, everyone's received those. Yes, Pat? Oh, you're, you're, all those in favour of approving?
So can I just add that there's two additional payments that came in that aren't listed on there. And they are. So they are thirty three pound thirty to Jo Howe for her expenses. And a man with a van of hundred ninety five pound and there to collect some desks and racking.
For the food hub?
Yeah, having new desks. But yeah, other than that.
So is everyone happy to approve those? Thank you, Michelle. Item eight, to consider agreeing and adopting the town delivery plan. There we go. Has anyone got any, yes, Tina?
I propose we accept it all for better working together. Yeah, partnership working.
Don, second. All those in favour? Some others? Thank you. There we go. But not too many trees, please. Thank you. Yeah, you're free to go. Thank you for coming. Item nine, to consider donation application received from the Wayland Partnership Trust. I hope you've all, yes, Pat? This, their donation is for the boiler. It's exactly the same, because what we'd asked for was the updated accounts, which finally Bronwyn sent through after a couple of emails to remind. I have written a few notes down here, which if you bear with me, I'll read through. They did receive four thousand four hundred and eighty three pounds from the Norfolk Community Foundation. And it was the Breckland match funding for that boiler, which they used apparently to do the deposit, and they've already brought the boiler. I don't know if any of you sat and read through the asbestos report, but I did. And upon reading the asbestos report, the asbestos they have is amycite. And amycite is a brown asbestos, which is one of the higher hazardous asbestos. The recommendation by the company was that it was the removal of the walls and the floor to ensure the safety of the public and any workforce that have to go in that boiler room, which they've ignored. He admitted that, he said they put it in. It then goes on to say that there is no asbestos on the gaskets, but the gaskets are new. That's where the boiler's been put in. So that's why there is no asbestos there. Personally, I cannot see how we can approve any more funds for them, because they've just not, they've ignored a report that they had to have done. And by giving them four thousand pounds, we're in effect saying, well, it doesn't matter about any workforce that have got to go in there and sort out the boiler, because we now know that that asbestos should have been removed. I've also looked at their accounts and thought, well, they are a very healthy partnership. And they've got the money, they've already spent the money to buy the boiler. Personally, I would say no to the four thousand. But has anybody got any other observations or comments that they would like to make before we put it to the vote? Yes, Pat? So any, yes, Stan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to reinforce what you've said, if we, knowing what we know about the asbestos report, if we were to fund anything towards that boiler, we ourselves are ignoring that report. And we are the council that will be paying for the boiler that's in an unsafe environment. And years down the line, this will be the council that gets sued as a consequence. So I can't support that.
Yes, Tina.
Not only that, if we pay for their boiler, every other charity in the town is going to want a boiler. And then my boiler's not very good. So, you know, where does it end?
Has anyone else got any comments? Can I ask all those in favour of giving the Wayland Partnership the four thousand pounds? All those against? Some anonymous against. Emotion carried, but we won't be donating the four thousand. Thank you. Item ten, to consider membership of the Rural Town Group. Does anybody have any comments on that at all? I have to be honest, I don't know what it is either.
How much is it?
Can we defer it then till we know what it is and how much it's going to cost then? Or is that some, or is it?
Oh, what's that?
Apologies.
Oh, I missed that. That's.
I think from limited knowledge that I've got, Swaffham's assigned up to it. And they, that organisation promotes markets in rural market towns. So they, they, they put people together and encourage stall holders to go to markets and things. So it's not just promoting to the public that is there. They try and get stalls to go to different towns and what have you to attend markets.
Lovely. Thank you, Don. Yes, Tina.
Given it's market, market driven, I think we should, because our market is in dire need of as much help as possible and advertising. So I think every little bit will help towards that. So I'm, yeah, if it's that, then yeah, good, let's do it.
Did you have a comment, Pat?
Yes, Peter.
Well, Chair, I'd go along with that. I think we should join. And then in June, we can see how much it's going to cost to rejoin. So I think we might as well take advantage of free membership for the time being.
Can I suggest a deputy clerk gets on and we try and max out what we can find out between now and June, so that we're on the ball and on rocking and rolling before we find out how much it is, then we know what we're, what we're paying for. Well, yeah, but also find out what facilities and, you know, what information we can use and what we can do with it between now and June. Then if they turn around and say it's four thousand pound a year, at least we've had a couple of months of maxing it out. But just to find out what we could, then we can use it.
Can I just rack my brains? Did we have a market working group?
It's me.
Well, because I was.
Yeah, get me the info.
I was just thinking that maybe the market working group might like to help.
It's me and Jane, the clerk. So yeah, get me the, me and Michelle now.
Okay. All right. I was just going to try and offload it for you, but I mean, you know, somebody else can do investigations. All right, thank you. Item eleven, planning to consult on planning applications received since the last meeting. Sorry. Keith, is there something you'd like to say? Thank you, Keith. So over to you, please, Jane.
Thank you. We've only got two this week. There's one that's on your agenda and one that came in subsequent to it. The first one is eleven point one, three PL twenty twenty three zero zero two three LU, construction of an outbuilding, a garage certificate of lawfulness for St Mary's Close. This is the one that's come up before with this, this one we mentioned last week, which was withdrawn. And it's now been resubmitted. So it's a certificate of lawful use. Now, that is different to a planning application. When it comes to a certificate of lawful use, it's not considered against policy, it's considered against facts. And there are two sorts that are submitted. One is that it's immune enforcement action, or that planning permission is not required. So those are the two angles that come in. This application relates to a large building at the rear of the site. So we can't comment on the policies, because there's no policies involved. But I do have concerns about the format of the application. Certificates of lawful use, when issued, have to be very precise, because they do confer immunity to prosecution. And there is an outstanding enforcement issue on this site, which does worry me. And I've seen some go through to four years' appeal, and councils have lost them because they've been a bit iffy on their wording. So I have done some wording which I would like to submit. So if I read it out to you, if anyone's got any concerns, if you could let me know. One town council is aware that this application is for a certificate of lawfulness which is judged on matter of fact and not against planning policy. It is also noted that there's an outstanding enforcement issue on the site in relation to an alleged material change of use from that of a dwelling house to a mixed use as a dwelling house and for the storage of motor vehicles. As there are no supporting documents available for the public in this case, as is a normal practice, the town council relies on the case officer to ensure that legal advice is sought to establish that should a certificate be issued, it would not inadvertently provide immunity to any required enforcement action. A few points give rise to concern, lack of knowledge as to whether the enforcement issues raised on the site have been resolved. The description on the application refers to the construction of an outbuilding, but the listing refers also to a change of use. This is confusing. It is marked on the application form that no change of use is involved, and states that the use of the site is that of a dwelling house C three. There is no mention of material change of use raised in the enforcement case. It is unclear whether the application relates to a section one nine one of the Town and Country Planning Act, existing use is lawful, or under section one nine two of the Town and Country Planning Act, proposed operation is lawful. So those are the points that I wanted to raise. If you're happy with me to submit those, I will.
Sounds very thorough.
If you all understand what I mean.
Yeah, absolutely. All those in favour of that being submitted on our behalf? Thank you, Jane.
Thank you. I've just got one more. This is a quick one. Three PL twenty twenty three zero zero three one F, change of use from existing HMO to two storey house and self contained flat above existing installation and installation of external staircase. This is Flaydon House, one Norwich Road, just opposite the Queens Hall. Don't know if you know where it is. There's usually a, yeah, there's nature mode and there's usually a trampoline outside. There has been an ongoing problem there with rubbish being stored against that fence. And I did wonder whether this might be an opportunity to introduce a condition relating to waste storage, which could resolve an issue that's ongoing, that has been since the place has been occupied. So I've got a suggestion. If you're happy, I'll read it out. No objection to physical changes. It is noted, however, that this site often raises concerns in respect of the storage of rubbish in the open to the front of the site in full public view. The town council would ask that consideration be given to the imposition of a condition relating to the location and method of storage of waste for collection on the site. Everyone happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay, then that's it. I'm done. Thank you.
Chair, through you. Tina, you raised the issue about the ver and said there's been an application of.
Use from, from a facility of residential care to a hotel. But it doesn't, I've included the questions to licensing as well. And so far, there hasn't been an application for a drinks licence or such like. But it's only just come on, as I say, on the.
From the same company?
It's from the same, from the same chap who owns the building.
Hopefully, that will come up in a moment. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Item twelve, to pass a resolution to exclude the public and press to consider staffing matters. Yeah.